Please rise to the pleasure of being here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. We come here tonight and reflect and share the strength and support for our citizens. We come and do not turn away from the people, but hear and strive for the justice and peace among us all. We ask for the guidance and help of Jesus, the light of the world. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman Roque, or Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Fatika?
Here.
Dr. Faust?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mrs. Law?
Here.
Mr. Rastetter?
Here.
Chairman Leon?
Here. During the hearing of the public, those who have called in will receive five minutes of time. Those that have not called in receive three minutes of time. The only one that has called in this evening is Randy Barnes. After you give your name and where you live, Randy, I'll start your time.
Thank you. My timer's not working, so give me 30 seconds to go. I'll try to wrap it up on a high note. Randy Barnes, I live in Dr. Faust's district. And I'm here again to talk a little bit about how taxpayer funds are used. And that would be specific to the Erie County Gaming Revenue Authority and the $6 to $7 million they have at their disposal to disperse a year. Two years ago, we were fortunate enough, the public was at least, to see the visa statements and the check registers. And that's when we learned how some of our taxpayer monies was being spent, like on the membership of the Pennsylvania Society for the Director. And we got to learn how Country Fair has this deal on office supplies. When you go into Country Fair every few days and spend $3.09 on office supplies of taxpayers' money with the taxpayers' paid visa card. But through one of the council members' due diligence, we found out they were buying coffee creamer. They were going to Country Fair, buying coffee creamer and calling it office supplies. Of course, my question was, who's buying the coffee? I mean, if they would have the nerve enough to buy coffee creamer at Country Fair on a regular basis with taxpayers' money, the question is, and I think it's a fair question, who's paying for the coffee? Then the next question I have is for the administration. How much does the county spend on coffee creamer? And we've got the courthouse, we've got the Department of Human Services, we've got the Health Department, we've got the prison. How much, because I'm thinking between the coffee creamer Erie County Gaming Revenue Authority provides and the coffee creamer the county taxpayers are paying for in the county, we should have a contract to get a deal on coffee creamer, call it office supplies. There's too much room in this authority for hanky panky, sticky fingers. We pointed that out when Mr. Wood wrote himself a check on the 17th of March for $5,604 in account, called it tuition reimbursement. Then six weeks later, Mr. Wood wrote him out himself a check, 2138, on April 24th, for $5,527, and called it professional development. Not only is this borderline on criminal, change in the words, that benefit yourself with taxpayers' money, it's against the IRS. Did you know that when you have tuition reimbursement over $5,000, it should be on your W-2? It creates a taxable event. But you know, when you write yourself out a check, it doesn't end up on your W-2, does it? You know, we talked about the last time I was here, a month ago, how there's 67 counties in Pennsylvania, 67 counties that Bridgeway Capital can go and lend money. There's 67 counties out there, okay? And we talked about how many counties have to take their taxpayer gaming revenue money and give it to Bridgeway Capital from the lend money in that county? You know how many? Out of 67? You know how many counties have to? One. One county. That's Erie County. That's Erie County gaming revenue money that Mr. Wood has his hands on, directed, directs that money to a firm in Pittsburgh, where the only county in Pennsylvania that takes their gaming revenue money gives it to a firm in Pittsburgh. You know, Mr. Schember, across the street, spends $100,000 every month for economic development. $100,000 a month. Just a half a block away is the budget for his economic development office. What are we doing paying a firm in Pittsburgh? You know, we're lending the money at 1% and 3%. We're loaning it back to our people that need it here in Erie at 7%, 8%, 9%, 10%? I'm amazed. But you know, anything goes up there on the Hill, because they can't even drink the water we drink down here. We drink the water down here in the county courthouse, right? But up there, they have to spend the taxpayers' money on cold draft delivery. They can't drink the water that we drink down at the courthouse if the rest of us, employees of the county. How many county employees get a $10,000 a year supplement for not taking the county insurance? It's a long list.
Mr. Barnes?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Have a great evening.
Anyone else wish to? Please give us your name and your resident.
Councilman, my name is EJ Feig. I'm the resident of the city of Erie. I'm on the side of 1535. I'm here to speak out in support of the community college, a standalone community college here in Erie. I just kind of wanted to share my experience with higher education and how I feel a community college could possibly benefit me as I'm younger. As I stand here, I'm 36 years old. I just graduated from college two years ago with my bachelor's degree. The reason why it took so long is because a lot of people, I went to college when I was 18, 19 years old, and I just wasn't ready. You know, I took out all the student loans. I went to Mercyhurst College, $26,000 in debt my first year. Did the 10 classes, didn't hit the GPA. I needed to diminish my financial eligibility. Now everything costs, if I wanted to go back to school, it was out of pocket. I had to pay over $3,000 to re-enroll with classes. At the time when I was 19, 20 years old, $3,000 might as well have been $3 million for me because it just, it wasn't an option. I had to pay, I didn't have family to provide for housing for me or for food or for anything. So I did what a lot of people did, and I put my college dreams in the back burner and I went to work. I was a bartender, I was a server, I installed Dish Network, I delivered phone books, I did every single thing that I could do to make money, the whole time with the idea that I want to get back to college someday, because I know that I'm more than capable to do the job that a lot of people that have college degrees are doing. But now I don't have the credentials or even the access to obtain the credentials because of my financial situation. So what I think that is if I had a community college when I was younger, you know, at the price that they offer compared to what the local universities around here, even if I would have messed up, the gap I would have had to have closed wouldn't have been so large. You know, there were a lot of years where I just thought going to college was just wasn't going to be an option, even though I always wanted to do it, but I just thought to myself, I had a kid, you know, I started working 40 hours a week, you know, I'd take care of my child, pay for her stuff, and you know, but it got to a point where I needed to, you know, make a move, execute my dream. I was able to save enough money to pay off the tuition, go back to school, but now I owe $72,000 for student loan debt. And what that's doing to me now is I apply for a mortgage, I get proof of the mortgage, but it's not for an amount of a house that is good for me because my debt-to-income ratio is too low. I go to apply for a car loan, I have to take the highest rates because my debt-to-income ratio is too low. Even though my credit rating is good, because my debt is so high, I can't buy all these things in the Erie economy that I want to. So I can't, I can't produce, you know, the economic, I can't put in my, my money as I'd like to into the economy because, because of my student loan debt. So I just would, you know, a lot of the time, we talk about the taxpayers' dollars and everything like that, we need to spur economic growth here. I think it's about time that maybe we start taking a look at investing in the actual citizens of Erie and developing them and developing, you know, their pathway towards economic freedom. Like Councilman Horton, like you said, education is that boat, that list, you know, the tide of land is all boats. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, EJ.
Go ahead, sir. Okay. Hello, Councilman, honorable gentleman, lady. I come to you today in celebration, number one. We have your. Hartley, 45341, Applewood Lane, Erie PA. The first issue I want to talk about is our brothers and sisters that are on the picket line up at the Webtech plant. I want to stand in support of those individuals. I don't believe they were treated fairly when Webtech took over. There are ways to get through this, there are ways to negotiate, but both sides have to come together to do that. And I think it'd be best if they weren't walking a picket line for those negotiating to take part. And I just want to rise and tell you my support. Second thing I want to talk about is a community college. It's vital we have a community college in this town. There are many, many years and decades that other areas of the state have enjoyed community college access and ability, and we have been devoid of it here. It's something very necessary. I know when I grew up, I went to school for a couple of years, and then I got married, had a couple of kids, had three jobs, and then later on, I went back to school, got my degree. And this is something that I know in particular for our minority, our marginalized citizens, they need education to rise up. And they don't need something that may come flying in and out of here, maybe they can log into a course now again. They don't have a teacher, they don't have something to deal with. We need a brick and mortar school here to allow people to have an identity, have a spirit of core with an organization. We are due. Every one of these individuals out here over the years has paid other places that could have a community college. We need one for ourselves, we need that investment right here. And we are due that. We are owed that by Harrisburg and by the General Assembly. And I know this August council has pushed for it, approved for it. We need to stand up and say, now is the time. Let's get this done. Thank you very much.
My name is Freda Tepfer. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. First of all, I would like to request or suggest that the council consider, when they have a appointment to fill on a board, a commission, or an authority, to make it publicly open and let people apply for it. Some of the city council members are starting to do that. I know Kathy Dahl Camper did that with the EMTA board. It's, it's, it's an appropriate way to help people to become involved in their government. I have a friend that you'll probably see in the future. Her name's Shelley. She's got a master's degree and she has a guide dog, and she's a lot smarter than me, and she deserves a chance to get on a commission. That's the first thing I'll say. Secondly, I'm here about the community college. I grew up probably with a little bit more comfortable economic circumstances than EJ did, but if it hadn't been for community colleges, I would not have made it through college. I went to a school for one year, and then I dropped out. And several years later, I made a deal with my parents, I paid for the classes. And in a community college I went to for a year and a half, and then eventually graduated from Cornell. And then later on, I went to community colleges when I was going through career transition. I got a certificate to teach ESL, I was certified as a nurse assistant, and I took many courses in community college when I was working in the educational field. A place-based community college, not a floating school with online courses, or a course here, there, at Gannon, Mercyhurst, wherever, is essential to give people a sense of identity and to, to, to offer them the kind of support services that only community colleges can provide. I not only benefited from those services, but I actually worked for them. I was a scribe for people with disabilities who had to take exams. There are, are services for people who need to get GED, or, or they need adult basic education, they need ESL, and vocational training. There are courses, there are services to help support people who aren't quite ready, who just need support, people who might be in transition from incarceration or other programs. There's, there's no better place for people with whatever challenge they have to, to, to set the foundation to succeed in education than a community college. And it has to be a place-based facility, not some kind of free-floating thing that's Northwest something or other. It needs to be a place people can go to and, and have that sense of identity. Thank you.
My name is Catherine White, 3. I live at 2722 East Avenue, Erie, Pennsylvania. And I'm not going to repeat what they said about community college, because they said it well, except to add one thing. We raised a large family, and because it was a large family, we were among the working poor. And so some of our kids were able to qualify for academic scholarships, and that's how they got their college degree. We held a college education as an important thing, whether it's two years or four years. But those who couldn't qualify for the academic scholarships ended up joining the military, and I'm proud of those three kids who, who had their service, but gave their service, but they did it so they could get a college education. But none of the three came back to this area. And I think that's a loss, because I think that if there'd been a college, if there'd been a community college, that would have given them the academic support that they needed to have that confidence. So they didn't come back. Other cities have gained, and I've lost. And then, anyway, I think we're losing some real potential by not having something here in town that gives them the opportunity to, to keep those families together, to invest in this city, to have a future and a hope. When they're going elsewhere, we have a brain drain. And there's a gap between high school and college for those who need a little bit of help, or those who just plain can't afford it. And so for the sake of our city and our county, please give community college the consideration it deserves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. My name is Bob Casillo. I live in Chairman Fiori's district, proudly. And I want to talk tonight in behalf of the Erie County Community College. I've been a board member and past president of the Erie School District for over a dozen years. And currently, I just want to, I'll be brief. I know you have a lot on the agenda. Currently, we have over 11,000 students, of which over 80% are living at or below the poverty level in the city. We hold the dubious distinction of being the poorest urban school district in the Commonwealth. Now, over the past dozen years, we've graduated literally thousands. In fact, I graduated as a director of about 11 and a half thousand people, young men and women, from our high schools. And the, these men and women, unfortunately, graduate with little or no hope for a family-sustaining job, as a result of not having the ability to go to a college that they can afford. You know, I could give you a personal example. I have two, two sons, both went through the city of Erie School District. My eldest graduated from Penn State Baron, and my cost was $97,000. My second son went to Kent State in Ohio at a cost of $65,000. Now, I bore a lot of that expense because there was no way in God's creation they could afford to go on and absorb those kind of expenses. So I firmly believe that the Erie County Community College will offer hope to the graduates, to the kids who are leaving the public education and moving on, to help them obtain family-sustaining wage and a future. Time doesn't diminish the need, it exasperates it. Here we are, two years in the making here, since that application was initiated, since the process was, excuse me, was begun, and we're still in the process. So again, I ask, continue the good fight. We need a community college desperately. We have to be able to give the children in the city, any area.
Thank you.
I beg your pardon. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Kaylee, 1232 West 11th Street. When Bob was speaking, sorry, Freda. Bob was speaking, and I kind of want to echo some of that, but I was just thinking, when my parents were in college in the 70s, they were able to work and pay for it as they, as they went. When I got to college, between Edinburgh and Gannon, I'm now almost $100,000 in debt. I have two sons, one's 11, one's 21. I don't want to see them go into that kind of debt and be burdened with that for a good chunk of their lives. I encourage them to go into a trade. But if, if my younger son decides when he graduates from high school that a trade is not for him, I would really love for him to have the option to have like a stepping stone that the community college could provide for him. That would be a reasonable, affordable place for him to get some education while he's still deciding what he wants to do with the rest of his life. And Bob is absolutely correct. The, I mean, the thing I saw in the news today about 16501 not just being the poorest zip code in the state, but in the entire country, that's absolutely shameful. And if we do not have something like this for our kids, it's just going to keep getting worse and worse and worse until Erie and Erie County falls right off the map. So I really, really want to advocate for this, and I hope that you all will too. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Judy Roth. I live in Fairview, Pennsylvania. I want to talk about economic development and how it relates a little bit to the community college, or a big part of it. I've been a small business owner since 1985. I was a small business owner in Ohio until 10 years ago when I moved to Erie. Small businesses, why do they, they have to be able to attract employees? And one of the ways in which we can attract employees is to be able to offer them benefits. And one of those benefits is education. I was able to send all of my employees during the 20 years I was in business in Cleveland, I sent every single one of them to a community college, to Cuyahoga Community College. In some cases, it was for one course, in some cases, it was a course that I needed them to take for our business. In one case, it was a, literally a program that the girl went through to become a paralegal to leave me and go to work for a lawyer. But essentially, I was able to compete with other businesses because I was able to offer that as a benefit and be able to afford it. I can't afford to send an employee to a school that's going to cost me $30,000. I can afford to send an employee to a school that's going to cost $2,400, okay? And it can become a benefit. And not only does it, does it give me the opportunity to get better employees, but it also gives them a better atmosphere when they be, when they can actually learn more. And sometimes those courses don't apply directly to the workforce, but they, they actually work in terms of just the person's growth period, you know? And I go back to another comment, and that is, a community college is a community college. It serves the entire community. And small business is the backbone of every community in this country, if you think about it. There's more small business, I don't care whether you're a small city, a big city, a county, small business makes the cities run in so many ways. You drive down any street in this country and you see a lot of small businesses. And the more help we give those small businesses, the better off the community is. And one of the big helps is to offer them an opportunity to educate their employees, and not only their employees, but themselves. I was also able, as a business owner, to participate in many, many programs that the community college offered us as small business owners. And by the way, women start small businesses twice as much as men do, okay? And we stay in business, so help us. Look at the Athena Program here in Erie and how successful it's been, and that's small business owners, women. And they need a community college. Thank you.
Martha Wachuku, Myrtle Street, 711 Myrtle Street, Erie, PA. I'm here in support of the community college. In case you don't know, Pennsylvania is ranked number one in student debt, and those numbers increasingly gets worse as the generations go on. I know I personally hear a lot of boomers talking about being able to talk or pay for college back in their day, but as Gen X of school, the debt ratio got worse. Me being a millennial, a lot of my peers are saddled with a lot of student debt. And I see a high schooler here and a young kid here who are going to see it get worse and worse for themselves. And people need options, and I believe community college is one of those options. I don't understand how a city of this size, with the human capital of its size and the statistics that we're seeing for poverty, doesn't have one already as a tool and a resource for the community that is necessary. And as far as it being a online school potentially, I think that's a terrible idea. For one, not everyone has access to computers, not everyone can afford internet services. And beyond just being able to take classes, community colleges, at least from my hometown, are used as a resource, at least in a brick and mortar sense, for people to congregate in communal spaces. They're used for classes outside of just degree uses, whether it's learning how to cook and learning how to catch up on the technological gap for the older generation. So I think a community college is a vital need for our area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Make sure you keep strict time on this guy.
I made a mistake.
He's been known to bend the rules in the past.
I know. My watch is with you. Go by, Joe.
You know, it's always accurate. Joe Giles, former member of county council for, what, 32 years? It's good to see you all. And what brought me out today was not Mardi Gras, although I think it'd be an excellent time to celebrate Mardi Gras tonight, since it is Mardi Gras. And when I checked with Danae, I said, oh, what's on the agenda for tonight? She said, oh, there's only one or two things, and there shouldn't, it shouldn't be a long meeting. I said, oh, what a surprise. Anyway, tonight is Danae's last meeting for county council. And how many years have you served for county council?
Six years.
Okay, it seems like 10.
I think that was a compliment.
Yes, 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 yes. But anyway, Danae, Danae is moving on to higher ground, and I just heard about it today. So I went to Berwyn Moore, who was the first poet laureate we had, and this is a double thing, which Danae, I mean, Berwyn just completed a book at the end of 19, and she wound up winning the John Ciardi Award for her writing. And I can't think of, too many people in our county or area can claim that. And I wanted, I said, what would be good for Danae to have on her trip out of town to a new job? Is a copy of Berwyn's latest book and her dedication, her hard work, her personality, her drive, and above all, her loving spirit. She has added an awful lot to both the county that many of you don't see and realize, but she is one of a kind. And you will realize as we go along, and she's no longer there, that her skill set and her dedication and her hard work will surely be missed. So anyway, that, that was it. I was going to be brief and go out and get some beads and party with the community.
Thank you, Joe.
So take a moment from all of the stress and all the things that everybody has been talking about. talking about, and just take a night and enjoy the bit of life, and thank you, Danae.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? Anyone else, once, twice, third and last time? Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, move the approval of the minutes of the February 19th meeting?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust, seconded by Mr. Horton for the approval of the minutes of February 19th. Comments? Roll call on that, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes. Before we go on to the reports of county officials, I noticed that we have a Boy Scouts troop here. Would you please have them stand up and be recognized? Thank you, yes.
These Boy Scouts are from Troop 146, and they're from Fairview, my district, so I really welcome them. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Next, a report of county officials, county executive and/or designee.
No reports tonight.
No reports, that's, thank you. Next is the Finance Committee. Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Chairman, we have no Finance Committee report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, Mrs. Fatika.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Personnel Committee met on February 28th and agreed to put items listed under New Business A and B on the agenda for this evening. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Fatika. Next reports, Kathy, you said you had a report this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. After attending the Board of Health meeting on February 25th, I think it's important that I share what I learned about 21st century public health. This is essentially a system upgrade, often referred to as Public Health 3.0. And this system allows public health departments to engage in planning and addressing emerging public health issues, concerns, and emergencies. Public health is responsible for every Erie County resident, visitor, tourist, or transient person who travels through our county. The current operating system of public health leaves local health departments in vulnerable positions which could ultimately affect the entire community. Some examples of unforeseen issues are the inability to recover from a natural disaster or a new tick or mosquito-borne disease that had never been seen in colder climates, and this list goes on. As the world changes, public health response must be ready to meet that change. The work of public health is directly related to the economic vitality and national security. In a recent report from the Association of Chronic Disease Directors, the impact of poor collective community health is described as having both economic and human costs. Several developments are driving the need to re-envision public health. Health trends in the past 30 years are such that leading causes of death are now attributed to behaviors like smoking, sedentary lifestyle, eating habits, and social and physical environments where we live, work, and play. Certainly, the work of the Erie County Department of Health will continue, but upgrading the focus will actually better reflect its mission statement, which is to preserve, promote, and protect the health, safety, and well-being of the people in the county. The members of the Board of Health are asking county council to support the Erie County Department of Health as they investigate new ways to conduct business while exploring ways to advance local health practices. This moves the direction from reactive to proactive. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Kathy, next report, Andre.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Erie County community strongly supports the establishment of a community college and highly values the introduction of a more affordable post-secondary option into the market. There is a strong demand for education and training that leads directly to available employment. In the absence of a community college, local groups, such as the Erie Regional Manufacturing Partnership, are trying to fill the gap. However, none can address the existing community needs at scale. Groups like these would be partners with a community college. The need is too large for a patchwork approach, and the scale is growing. Relatively large layoffs by major employer coupled with a high percentage of local manufacturing workforce nearing retirement requires sustainable and scalable retraining and new employment, new employee opportunities, which increases the urgent need for a community college. A community college model supports the needs of Erie County. The proposed curriculum is unique to Erie and meets the current needs. The model is nimble and can pivot if those needs shift. The kinds of students that typically enroll in community colleges require a level of advising and guidance that is not possible via distance learning. The kinds of students that typically enroll in community colleges require, require a level of advising and guidance that is not possible via distance learning. Existing programs would be supported by and complementary to a community college. Erie County is missing out on massive federal investments specifically designed to address the challenges Erie currently faces. Two years ago, northeastern Pennsylvania community colleges received a four-year, $10 million federal grant to develop new degree certificate and diploma programs in high priority career fields. The funding is part of the Trade Adjustment Assistant Community College and Career Training Competitive Grant Program, and Erie could be assessing that if it established a community college. Unprecedented corporate and philanthropic investments are on the table right now. There's over a half billion dollars' worth of investment underway in the city of Erie proper downtown. It creates opportunities and will generate new programming and collaborative efforts for an Erie County community college. The philanthropic community has committed over $4 million towards the study and establishment of a community college. A shifting higher education market supports the introduction of a community college. It's costly for profit institutions, costly for profit institutions have received increased scrutiny based on new data collected by the U.S. Department of Education's College Scoreboard, leading to closures across the country. At the same time, local colleges and universities are working hard to help Erie by providing associate degrees and shorter-term certificates at reduced tuition rates. However, they are not designed to provide the kind of highly vocational training, developmental education support, and strong ties to the labor market that community colleges typically Erie County has low education attainment, a soft base of high-paying jobs, and significant poverty. A community college would be a linchpin in increasing the educational attainment of the region, a key factor to attracting business and industry with decent-paying jobs, which could lead to a reduction in poverty. Nationally, community colleges educate students at much lower cost than four-year institutions. They attract a diverse set of students and have higher persistence rate for low-income students than for profit institutions. Higher education via community college is a much less risky endeavor, particularly for those with lower income. The gray demographics of Erie County will necessitate replacement of many highly-trained employees in the manufacturing sector. More people need the necessary training and certificates. The Erie County would benefit from a coordinated workforce and economic development system that could nimbly assess and respond to education and business needs as established. A community college could be the center of this integrated system, serving as centralized resource where employees are prepared for and connected with employment. A community college could also help foster the growth of existing companies and attract new jobs to the area. It'll serve as a feeder system to the already existing four-year universities. Community college in Erie County would put Erie County citizens on parity with the rest of the state and bring it to the funding table. Erie County is the largest population center in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania without a community college. Taxpayers in Erie County are currently paying to support community colleges in other areas of the state but not receiving any of the benefits, zero return on our investment. In a county that is struggling with poverty and population retention, a community college could help stem the tide of brain drain and give students a chance to obtain training that matches locally available jobs. I'm getting there. Community college and university leaders throughout Erie County would benefit by a community college as a vehicle to increase the market of college-bound students. Local colleges and universities partner with the community college in communities where one exists to help carve out a niche in the market. Community colleges in other markets have established strong partnerships with existing post-secondary institutions which have proven to effectively increase enrollment and diverse coursework offerings while increasing post-secondary attainment. Across the country, enrollments at colleges and universities are declining, while leaders from both political parties are exploring and even implementing free community college tuition programs. Former President Barack Obama touted the value of two free years of community college, and in Tennessee, in Oregon, and most recently, New York, that vision is becoming a reality. As Americans increasingly recognize that a high school diploma often does not suffice in communities fortunate enough to house a community college, extending public education to 14 years is becoming a bridge to either a college or university or family-sustaining The difference between, well, excuse me, the timing of this study that we, that we accomplished here in Erie County also coincided with a changing post-secondary marketplace in Erie County. It created an opportunity for community college to fill in the gaps. Edinburgh University is struggling with financial and enrollment challenges. The University of Pittsburgh and Penn State University are evaluating the closure of local campuses. An effort at the federal level to restrict immigration is underway, discouraging international student attraction and retention, and the advent of the rural regional college all represent market uncertainty but should not be viewed as a mitigating need. A community college in Erie County needs to create meaningful relationships with employees. The people of Erie County need to have access to training that translates into employment. If the community college forgoes, if the community, if the community college forges these vital partnerships and seek to be an engine of economic growth and workforce development, it will achieve its goals. While it shows deep commitment to the community of four-year institutions in the Erie area offering two-year degrees is not an optimum solution to Erie's pre-baccalaureate education needs, providing associate's degrees and shorter-term certificates is not within the mission of most four-year colleges and universities, and as a result, they are not designed to provide the kind of highly vocational training, developmental education support, and strong ties to the labor market that community colleges typically offer for the student. This is not an economical route to such credentials, since community colleges are almost always the least expensive post-secondary institutions. While both community colleges and nearly for-profit higher education institutions offer open access and educational opportunities, there are similarities in right there. Over the past several years, for-profit institutions have received increased scrutiny as new data collected by the U.S. Department of Education reveals that this sector charges higher tuition and has lower graduation rates than do community colleges. In addition, a higher proportion of students attending these colleges have more student loan debt and default on this debt at a higher rate than community colleges' students. In my closing, 82% of the respondents between 18 and 34 in Erie County said that it was important or very important for the Erie region to have a college. 78% of the women surveyed said having a community college is important or very important to this region. 75% said that they believe there are enough potential students in Erie County to support a community college. 77% of respondents believe it's very important for a community college to be involved with local economic development efforts. In addition, we know that community college students require a level of advising, guidance that is not possible via distance learning. For example, a rigorously researched model of college advising that has a strong positive impact on community college student retention and graduation includes active face-to-face advising designed to create strong relationships between students and advisors. This intrusive model, known as integrated planning and advising for student success, has been adopted as one part of large-scale reform efforts across Tennessee and North Carolina community college system and is expanded into a national program for the Gates Society. It is our opinion that there is a market demand and capacity to support a community college in Erie County. The addition of a community college to the market will assist with the countywide and regional transformation. The intent of this research is not to paint the community college as Erie County's lifeline, but to help define the essential role it could play in its transformation. That's taken right out of the community college application form, and it's not a, an attempt to, to litigate or validate because Erie County citizens have done that in 2006, we've done it in 2010, in 2016. This body, I'm proud to say, had the political will to advance it to the state level. We've met every requirement that every other community college of the 14 have met, and we expect to be, that our citizens will be afforded the same opportunities that the other 14 counties or areas that have community college are indeed afforded. Erie County residents with the poverty level, the worst, poorest zip code in the Commonwealth, numbers have gotten worse since 2006, they've gotten worse since 2010, and they've gotten worse since 2016. Our state delegation, please advance, please advance the concerns of Erie County government with the, with the board and the Department of Education, with the governor, and with both chambers of the House, and give Erie County residents a community college, which we richly deserve. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Andre.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Anderson.
I want to once again commend Councilman Horton for the energy and passion that he continues to show on this issue, and will continue to support the efforts of a community college, hopefully with just as much energy and passion as he has. But our citizens deserve a community college, and I stand for a community college with him. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, next on the agenda is There Is No Old Business. I'll entertain a motion for second reading of ordinance number eight. Moved by Mr. Horton.
Second.
Seconded by Kathy. Fatika, comments? Roll call, second reading of ordinance number eight.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes. Now, second reading of ordinance number eight, and title only, please, Mr. Clerk.
A second reading of ordinance number eight, 2019, first 2019 Drug and Alcohol Abuse Fund budget, supplemental appropriation of $293,474 for creation of six positions.
So, moved?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Fatika, seconded by Dr. Faust. Comments? Roll call. Roll call.
On ordinance eight, Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Chairman Faust, or rather Chairman Leon?
Yes. Next is the possible appointment of Michael Glass from 6th District. Mr. Rastetter, you move it.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Anderson. Comments? Roll call.
On the appointment, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes. Before we adjourn, I just want to make a couple comments, especially the fact that this evening we're going to lose probably one of our excellent employees. That happens to be Danae. Danae, we're going to miss you, and unfortunately, the loss for Erie County is going to be the gain for the federal courts. We, I'm certain I speak for every member of this council. I believe you've been one of the very best employees for county council, and you've done everything in an outstanding manner. I can't say enough about you. I certainly will miss you, Danae, and I'm certain that every member of this council is going to miss you also.
You're here.
Go ahead, Carl.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can only echo what Fiore said. It has been a pleasure to work with you those six years. I say this tongue-in-cheek, but it's true. She came down on the recommendation of the administration, which was probably not the strongest place to start with the council at the time. But I was on the committee that interviewed Danae, and she knocked our socks off. It was not even close how impressive her performance was in that interview, and the abilities and the skills that she brought to our office were outstanding. And she, the work that she has done on behalf of Erie County and on behalf of this council to get work done was always done in an impeccable way. And again, to echo what Fiore said, our loss is the U.S.'s gain because you have done outstanding work here, and I will miss you terribly. Good luck to you.
Carol?
Yes, Danae. I'm going to make you cry. The one thing about Danae is if I needed anything done, I knew who to call. I knew she was going to get it done, it was going to be done fast, it was going to be done good and right. And I don't know if we could find anybody to fill those shoes, but we'll give it a try. But we're going to miss you.
Andre?
Danae Breder, I just want to thank you for helping me to be a better council person. When I walked in the office, it was like jumping on the merry-go-round up at Glenwood. I can recall having a discussion with her husband, and I'm saying, okay, is there some type of mentorship program? He looked at me like I was crazy. It was like that merry-go-round. You just got to jump on and grab on. And what I grabbed on to was you. And I truly don't think that my first term would have been as smooth as it was or that we would have accomplished the things that we were able to accomplish with you. I came to county council knowing that I wanted to do some things. I didn't know that I would pick up a friend or two between you and Chris. And Angela and I, you know, we make that journey down to Pittsburgh pretty frequently, so we'll be seeing you. We won't allow so much time to go by, but we'll miss you. Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, Andre. Kathy?
Yes. Thank you for, I echo what Andre said, for all of your help. When I needed something done yesterday, you just did it. It was just magic. But mostly, I want to thank you for being a friend to Phil and for being a friend to me. And we can start meeting in Grove City for shopping or lunch, so I look forward to that. I wish you the very best of luck. Very best of luck.
Scott?
Yeah, thank you, Danae. It's amazing how much you've taught me in the last year, more than all these guys put together. That's for sure. She is an amazing, amazing person. Magic is a perfect definite.
Yes, it is.
Thank you again.
Carl?
Thank you. Danae, it's a real honor to know you in the short time that I've been here. You have been professional, and you make it possible for me to not be late or last minute. You make that smooth transition. I mean, I don't think so, but Danae comes the closest to making that possible, so. But I've so much enjoyed working with you and the things that I've learned working together to advance this county, and you are a true professional, but I shouldn't expect anything less from an East Sider, so. But best of luck to you and to your family.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Please adjourn the longest two-item agenda meeting in the history of Erie County.
Sorry, guys.
We've standard adjourned. Danae, good luck.
I did replace Mrs. Jackson. He's still got the record.